I'm gonna take a minute to press record and I asked the interpreters to also press record. Great. The spin, okay, great. All the interpreters are recording. That's great. And so we will start this hearing first with a presentation followed by time. But for all comments, the Q and A box is available here for you to submit any clarifying questions during the presentation. And we'll try our best to answer as many of them as we can. If you have any logistical issues, you can put that in the chat and we will be monitoring it and try to assist. And this webinar recording will be posted on mass.gov/2030cecp. After this meeting, give us about a day or two, it should be on our website. Alright, with that, I will turn it over to our undersecretary of Energy and Climate Solutions, Judy Chang, to begin the public hearing. Undersecretary?
Right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for participating. And this is the public hearing on our clean energy climate plans for 2025 and 2030, which are statutory required as far as our climate planning for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We are using the five and 10-year climate plans as the foundation to develop the policies and strategies to set and meet the greenhouse gas emissions reduction for the Commonwealth. We had developed an interim clean energy climate plan for 2030 that was made public in December 2020. Since then, the 2021 climate law has required us to develop a new plan, two plans for 2025 and 2030. So the proposed policies and the analyses that you shall see and should hear about in this presentation and in this discussion are based on the policies and programs already underway, based on stakeholders' feedback that we have received since the interim CECP was produced and other new requirements under the climate law. Next slide, please. As an overview, the content of this slide deck and tonight's hearing, I will cover some background on what we're, why we're developing the climate plan for 2025 and 2030, the key findings from our pathway analysis, the limits and sublimits for greenhouse gas emissions for 2025 and 2030, the key considerations for policy development. And then I will go into sector by sector, goals and strategies, starting with the transportation sector through buildings, electricity, non-energy industrial and natural working lands. And then we'll end with some next steps and explain to you what our timing looks like. We have included at the, in the slide deck, which you can download from our website, explanations of terms and acronyms that might be used in the plan and in this hearing. But I'm not going to cover that in the oral discussion. Next slide, please. As background, the 2021 climate law added new requirements for limiting emissions and how we should develop plans to meet those emissions targets and track their progress. Our clean energy climate plans are what the legislation refers to as the roadmap plans. On emissions economy-wide, we need to set an emission limit for every five years. The law had already set the 2030, 2040, and 2050 goals, requiring the economy-wide to achieve at least 50% reduction by 2030, at least 75% by 2040, at least 85% by 2050, and meet the net zero emissions in 2050. It also requires our agency to set emissions limit for the interim, five-year interims between those decades. And then our secretary in the Energy Environmental Affairs needs to set the sublimit for the following sectors: the electric power, transportation, commercial industrial heating and cooling, residential heating and cooling, industrial processes, natural gas distribution, and any other sector or sources that the secretary may choose. In addition, the first time, the definition, for the first time, the definition of natural and working lands is codified in the climate bill. And the legislation requires us to track carbon flux on natural working lands, set goals for reducing emissions and increasing carbon sequestration capabilities on those lands, and develop a plan to achieve the goals. In addition, we will designate specific metrics based on which we will set benchmarks and track progress over the decades. Next slide, please. Want to give you a sense of the public comments that we have received. Since the interim CECP for 2030 was released at the end of 2020, we have received over a thousand written comments during the public comment period. We also have held several sort of public hearing, just like this one, where commenters can voice their opinions. And we have heard many other comments and included in those comments that we hear that we should be more, we should set more commitments and be more specific around equity and environmental justice in our policies and supporting programs. We should be more specific and committed to ensuring a just transition by focusing on workforce development and training programs, especially for underrepresented groups. And we should also provide adequate funding and financing programs to support decarbonization overall. We also heard specific feedback on the policies. This slide has some high-level summaries of the perspectives in the submitted comments. On transportation policies, many want more commitment on public transportation programs to reduce car travel, incentives for low and moderate consumers to buy electric vehicles, more electric vehicle charging infrastructure, as well as for electrification to extend broadly to more vehicle types and classes. For buildings, we heard differing perspectives on building energy codes that achieve net zero. Questions about how fast we should phase out incentives for oil and gas heating systems and how fast we should electrify our buildings versus adding biofuel and hydrogen to our heating systems. For electric power sector, many supported more renewable energy that includes offshore wind, solar, and additional energy storage resources. But we also heard concerns about citing of ground-mounted solar projects and their land use impact. We have heard from some that they object to the inclusion of biomass combustion to create electricity as a part of our renewable portfolio standard. On non-energy sectors, we heard concerns about natural gas leaks being undercounted in our statewide greenhouse gas emissions inventory. Concerns about utilities, and concerns from utilities that they may not be able to meet the regulations capping SF6 emissions with additional build-out of electricity infrastructure, and concerns from some commenters about emissions from waste incineration to produce electricity. On natural and working lands, many commentators wanted additional urban tree planting. We also heard differing perspectives on forest management and durable wood products. Next slide, please. We created this slide to share with you how time has traversed over the last couple of years since we were drafting the interim 2030 Clean Energy Climate Plan. As all things happened, particularly in the climate space, many things have shifted and changed, so we wanted to put this slide up and provide you a context of some of the things that have changed. First, in transportation, the Regional Transportation Climate Initiative program was put on hold as a large influx of federal funding is being made available for transportation infrastructure. Meanwhile, the state of California has updated its regulation requiring truck manufacturers to increase their sale of non-emitting trucks and is in the process of updating additional regulations requiring car manufacturers to increase their sale of non-emitting cars. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts is required by law to follow California vehicle emission standards. Therefore, when California promulgates their rules, Massachusetts will be following. In buildings, our three-year energy efficiency plan for 2022 through 2024 was approved with strong commitment to weatherization, electrification, and a focus on serving our environmental justice communities to increase equity in our MassSave programs. Our Department of Energy Resources is updating the Stretch Energy Building Code and the Municipal Opt-In Net Zero Energy Code as required by the 2021 climate law. As indicated in the interim CECP, Governor Baker signed an executive order convening a commission on clean heat, and that commission is currently drafting preliminary recommendations on how best to cap and reduce emissions from heating fuels in buildings. In the power sector, we're now authorized to procure 5.6 gigawatt of offshore wind. The renewable portfolio standard was also recently changed by the climate law requiring 40% of Massachusetts electricity be produced from renewable energy by 2030. The climate law also established a municipal greenhouse gas emission standard, or GGES, requiring 50% of electricity produced by municipal light plants to be from non-carbon emitting resources. As we're bringing in additional hydroelectric energy from Canada to provide stable, clean energy to balance our intermittent renewable resources, there is an increased uncertainty around the New England Clean Energy Connect project, which was selected several years ago to be the transmission project that would bring imported hydroelectricity. In non-energy and industrial processes, the federal government is now phasing out fluorinated gases such as HFCs being used in refrigeration systems, aerosols, and foams. The phasing out of these potent greenhouse gases will help curb rising emissions from this sector nationally, as well as in Massachusetts. And regarding natural working lands, since the last year, we have begun re-improving our methodologies for tracking biogenic carbon emissions and carbon sequestration on our lands. This effort gives us a better estimation of how much emissions can be offset by carbon sequestration through our natural and working lands. Next slide, please. This slide shows you actual historical emissions from the various different sectors and a projection and simulation of what the economy can and will achieve to reach 50% greenhouse gas emissions reduction by 2030. In the past year, we did update the energy pathway analysis that was used for the 2050 roadmap study, looking at new emissions reduction requirement for 2030, 2040, and beyond, as well as more refined analysis of various ways to decarbonize buildings and more geographically-specific analyses. The geographically-specific analysis is being used to analyze the potential impact on our diverse communities, urban, rural, EJ communities, and those that use oil and propane for heat versus natural gas. Based on this work, we believe we can realistically achieve 32% emissions reduction in 2025 and on target to achieve 50% emissions reduction in 2030, economy-wide. I want to share with you some of the other findings. The power sector has decarbonized significantly in the last decade, and you can see that in the graphic of the bottom layer, which is the blue layer. This means that to further reduce emissions, we need the other sectors to carry the burden into 2030. And therefore, you see the other colors really shrinking harder between 2020 and 2030. Because we're already sitting in 2022, we have been implementing, developing and implementing policies to reduce emissions already in the past several years. But most of the policies to drive down emissions by 2025 would have to be already in motion for the impact to actually show up in 2025. But a lot more progress needs to be made, particularly in transportation and building sector, even though we have already promulgated, implemented many of the policies that I will describe later and discuss later. Due to the COVID pandemic effects in 2020, we saw a significant drop in greenhouse gas emissions, particularly in the transportation sector in 2020. So if you look at where the vertical line is with our blue dot on top of 2020, that shows you, first, the blue dot shows you a 25% target for 2020, which was set a decade ago. And then you will see the actual estimated, actual for 2020, which is slightly below that. I would say approximately a 20, 29% or so reduction, or 28, 29% reduction that was achieved in 2020. But if you recall, we had a significant scaling back of the economic activities in the Commonwealth. And from an emissions perspective, the biggest impact on that is how how little we drove in 2020, and therefore you saw a dip in that gray part of the graph showing the emissions reduction from our transportation sector. This means that our overall greenhouse gas emissions in 2020 was lower than previously planned and lower than anticipated. This also means that setting 32% reduction from 1990 level in 2025 may sound less aggressive than it actually is when compared to a very abnormal year in 2020. However, as you can imagine, getting economy-wide reduction that is above and beyond what COVID pandemic may has achieved requires significant effort, and that's what we're going, that's what we have been working on, and that's what we'll continue to work on. At 32% greenhouse gas emissions reduction for 2025, we need to lean harder on the second half of the decade, unless we can further reduce emissions from electrification of transportation in the next few years. Next slide, please. This slide is a table of how we categorize our economy from an emissions perspective. And the reason we want to share this with you is because the climate law specifically asked our agency to set sublimits for the sectors that you see on the left-hand side. We outline the sectors for which we will set sector-specific emissions sublimit and how they line up with the sectors in the greenhouse gas emissions inventory that is produced by Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection and is the standard for which we measure compliance with emissions reduction targets. It is important to note that the 2021 climate law requires us to set emissions sublimits for residential heating and cooling and for commercial and industrial heating and cooling. However, the greenhouse gas inventory tracks emissions from electricity consumption across all sectors. In other words, our emissions from the power sector is actually measured at the source where the power plants emit emissions. That also means that all power, all electricity consumed by whether it's residential buildings or commercial buildings or industrial facilities, all of those electricity, the emissions associated with all that electricity produced is tracked at the source at the power plant. Therefore, we're setting sublimits for residential heating only and commercial industrial heating only. Emissions from residential, commercial, industrial cooling, which primarily uses electricity, will be included in the sublimits for electric power sector. On the right-hand side of this table is how we group these sectors in the 2025 and the 2030 CECPs. Notably, that the buildings refer to both residential and commercial buildings, while the industrial energy is grouped with industrial processes and non-energy sectors. Well, this is the way we will discuss these sectors in the slide deck. We will author the clean energy climate plans to comply with the specific sectors spelled out in the law. Next slide, please. In this table, there are a lot of numbers in this table, so I'm going to walk through them slowly, one column at a time. So the rows are the same as the ones in the previous slides, so these are the sectors that we will be setting sublimits for. We indicate the proposed emissions level for each sector for 2025 and 2030. The 2025 is in the middle of the table and the 2030 on the outside right-hand side of the table. We have included the 1990 greenhouse gas emissions by sector with the same measurement methodology for comparison and for benchmark, because recall, all of the emissions reduction limits and supplements are set relative, in a percentage basis, relative to the 1990 levels. We also included 2020 estimated greenhouse gas emissions. These are actuals from 2020, but they're currently still being estimated. We don't have all of the actual datas from our national databases yet, but these are relatively accurate, but it reflects an estimate of our historical 2020 emissions limit. And this is, we left in here just so that you can see how much further we have to go or how much we're anticipating 2025 and 2030 will be. For the power sector, we need to continue to find ways to support the sector in building clean energy, import them, and procure them. We will get to the reforms that we're seeking from the power sector later in the presentation. For transportation, our proposed 2030 sublimit for this sector is more aggressive than what was indicated in interim CECP, which is shown next to the 2030 in a slightly gray color, where we show what we previously had proposed for 2030 and what we're proposing going forward. I want to also, I also want to emphasize that all of these numbers are still being finalized, so the actual emissions limits and sublimits may shift still slightly when we get to the final report and final plans. And this is the reason that is, we wanted to share these numbers with you early enough because we think directionally, this is approximately right, but we also are still refining all of the analyses and the modeling associated with 2025 and 2030. We see greater potential for the transportation sector to accelerate the market for electric vehicles, and that's why we're actually setting the limits to be even more aggressive than we had anticipated in the interim CECP. This is because we see recent commitments from automakers and increased federal investments and vehicle emission standards coming out of California. We also see greater potential for reducing total personal vehicle travel in Commonwealth in the wake of the pandemic. As hybrid work schedules for some people may help in reducing emissions in transportations and as cities and towns expand infrastructure for alternatives to personal vehicles, we need to set policies and programs to build on these trends to help accelerate the market for EVs, to create walkable and bikeable communities and capture the benefits of less commuting by engaging with employers to encourage less single occupancy commutes. And we will talk about the specific policies a little bit later. The decarbonization of residential heating will require more time to do it cost-effectively and equitably than we previously anticipated. We're beginning to see traction across the country, but it is slow coming on some of the technology and the costs due to many factors, including supply chain constraints. There are now new businesses trying to figure out ways to decarbonize our buildings, working with one community at a time, one building at a time. Here in Massachusetts, our most recent three-year energy efficiency and energy transition plan has allocated roughly $4 billion over three years to help with the transition, and that work is just beginning. Because of that, the proposed sublimit for residential heating will be less than indicated in the previous interim 2030 plan, though still aggressive compared to today's levels. The proposed sublimit for commercial industrial heating is relatively close to what was indicated in the interim plan. For industrial processes, the historical emissions increase here is due to the replacement of chlorofluorocarbons and with hydrofluorocarbons in cooling systems and aerosol sprays in the 1990s. And the HFCs are much less damaging than the atmospheric ozone layer than the CFCs that were previously used, but turn out to be quite a potent greenhouse gas. The next generation of refrigerants and aerosols should neither destroy the ozone nor exacerbate global warming. While the phase-out of HFCs have just begun, especially in recent federal actions, it will take some time for HFCs to be eliminated and their significant activities at the federal level. Next slide, please. So we wanted to share with you how we're actually coming up with these policies. I want to say we certainly place as much science as we can possibly get and the analysis that went into estimating the different pathways and how to get there has been extraordinarily groundbreaking and quite a detailed analysis, sector by sector. And generally speaking, from an economy-wide perspective, the decarbonization pathway analysis are set to meet the objectives you see on the slide here. First, develop a least-cost approach. Second, meet all the energy demands in all the sectors, including reliability reserves and constrained by economy-wide greenhouse gas emissions set by the climate law. We have developed portfolios of policies that together help us achieve these limits and sublimits that you just saw in the previous slide. In each sector, we want to make sure that the policies allow for equitable and just a just transition of our economy and society by protecting the low and moderate income consumers, environmental justice population, and other vulnerable communities and help them with the transition. We have received and considered significant amount of stakeholder input, including recommendations from our Global Warming Solutions Act Implementation Advisory Committee. Also important in our policy development was the consideration for practicality and feasibility for implementation and to make sure that we do not increase administrative burden where it's unnecessary to do so. And on the right-hand side, you see the various different factors we have to consider when we develop our policies to meet the emissions reduction goals that we set for ourselves. One, again, you know, we want to make sure that all the energy supplies are there when our consumers need them to grow the economy. While, second, achieve the green While second, achieve the greenhouse gas emissions reduction that's required under the law. Third, we have to take care of our consumers, make sure that the costs and the cost burdens are uh are are protected, consumers are protected from those co- cost burdens and make sure that we maximize the benefits that consumers receive from the transition. We want to protect our environmental justice communities and make sure the transition is done equitably. That means we don't leave people behind, we don't just um we can't just pick off the lowest hanging fruit, as we often say, but we wanna make sure that everyone has an opportunity to advance at the same time. We also took into account many of the stakeholders that we hear both from this kind of forum and other written uh written uh letters and comments. And then where where possible, governments as government, we want to advance market transformation. We want to move the market, we want to bring new technologies and bring down the costs of those technologies for all the consumers. And then lastly, we want to make sure that the implementation is feasible and practical, so that we're not overburdening people who who cannot afford the changes. So therefore, we can't just force people to adopt when uh instead we should push the market to change and for um for consumers to choose those changes. Slide twelve, please, next slide. So we want to paint a picture for you what twenty thirty may need to look like for us to achieve fifty percent reduction. And I think that's, it's very telling when we look back to twenty twenty when we had the pandemic drastically affecting our economy, and yet the blip on the emissions reduction, while significant, is still not even close to what we need to achieve by twenty thirty. So to paint a picture, we want to share with you a few things. On transportation, zero emission vehicles um sales need to represent most of the new passenger vehicle sales by twenty thirty. And growing and a growing share of the medium-heavy duty vehicles need to be uh electric as well and zero emission. Massachusetts residents will drive a little less. Hopefully, due to the combination of better biking and pedestrian infrastructure, more housing, near transit, and fewer single occupancy commutes. For residential and commercial buildings, a third of our homes will have to have tighter building envelope and are heated and cooled by electric heat pumps. Our commercial industrial buildings need to transition to electric or low-carbon heating systems. For building owners and occupants, they need to access clear guidance, technical assistance, and gap funding for clean heat solutions. For the power sector, more than two-thirds of the electricity consumed in Massachusetts need to come from renewable or clean energy resources. Solar and offshore wind, while we've been developing them for the last decade, they need to be established as regional economic powerhouses from Massachusetts with initial um with significant job opportunities for our people and operating with considerable guidance to ensure grid reliability while avoid ecosystem and land impacts. And for from the rest of the sectors, we need more cooling systems that use rich refrigerants that do not damage the ozone layer and are less potent greenhouse gases. And in general, from a from a waste management perspective, less plastics, mattresses, organic waste in our trash, and less trash overall. So for the next five slides, I'm going to cover a little more detail for each of the sectors. For our transportation sector, um this these slides contain quite a bit of policy um policy proposals and the ones that are already underway. So I'm not going to read all of them, but I wanna just highlight a few things. In transportation, our primary driver for deep decarbonization is electrification of vehicles. And the primary policy that will encourage like electrification of our vehicle fleet in both the interim C E C P and the updated the Clean Energy Climate Plan is the implementation of vehicle emission standard set in California, but will be adopted by Massachusetts and other participating states. The California Air Resources Board has now finalized its advanced clean truck standard, and so have we uh through uh Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection had the vans are clean trucks standards. Um in addition, um California is also working on the next stage of their Advanced Clean Cars Program, which will set the pathway for a hundred percent of all new passenger vehicles to be zero emission by twenty thirty five. By statute, Massachusetts is required to adopt those regulations when they're available. We have moved forward on two key programs to encourage electrification of medium-heavy duty vehicles. D O R, Department of Energy Resources More E V Truck Program, has provided incentives for medium and heavy-duty vehicles, while Massachusetts Clean Energy Center's Fleet Advisory Services Program offers commercial fleet operators the opportunity to do a thorough in- infrastructure logistics, cost and technology assessment to help fleets make the transition to E Vs. We are proposing additional policies to speed up the electrification of transportation with a focus on electrifying vehicles with important equity and public health benefits. That includes focused efforts to electrify school buses, vehicles for hire, and delivery trucks. We launched our school bus program earlier this year with a focus on putting Massachusetts school districts in a strong position to compete for federal funding and electrify vehicles that directly contribute to air pollution impacting our children. We see vehicle for hire as an important opportunity as well to get electric vehicles in the hands of high-mileage drivers with high pub- public visibility. While the rise of e-commerce make delivery trucks representing a growing source of emissions, both near our ports and more broadly in our residential communities throughout the state, we want to provide incentives for delivery vans and trucks with high mileage to transition to zero emission vehicles. Funding for these programs is included in the Mass Trac, T R A C, or the nine point seven billion infrastructure bond bill that Governor Baker filed a month ago. We also aim to secure additional funds through the Mass C E C Clean Energy Fund. We're moving ahead with the reforms to our more E V program that I just discussed earlier that will make the program more equitable and cost-effective by focusing incentives on less expensive vehicle classes and providing additional incentives for low and moderate income residents and targeting high-mileage or rural drivers. These programs will require additional funding, so we are working with our legislative partners to find funding for uh additional incentives for E Vs. We're placing more emphasis on strategies to reduce total vehicle miles traveled. This was both something that our stakeholders and bro- and the broader public care a lot about. And an opportunity to highlight some of the steps that the administration is already taking would be useful here to provide more people with alternatives to personal vehicles to get around. That includes increased ongoing commitment to complete streets and shared streets programs that have helped make Massachusetts a national leader on multimodal transportation infrastructure. Support for M B T A Bus Modernization Program and Housing Choice and M B T A Communities Programs, which should help us all build more housing near public transit. In addition, as mentioned earlier, in the wake of COVID pandemic, we see greater potential to work with employers to lock in and to reduce unnecessary travel. We will also be pursuing a statewide e-bike incentive program. Our overall metric for the sector include our analysis for the potential for E Vs in Massachusetts based primarily on the vehicle emission standard, as well as the projection for the total number of charging stations to support that fleet. We will project a modest potential reduction in total vehicle miles traveled by all the supporting policies that I just mentioned. Next slide, please. For the building sector, while none of this is easy, um it transportation, electrification, decarbonization is not easy. When it comes to buildings, I would say this is a very challenging sector to um to advance. The clean, the Commission on Clean Heat recognizes this and is working on very diligently on looking at various different components of moving building heat away from fossil resources and reduce emissions from our heating, heating systems. We have included on this slide some of the likely recommendations that are uh coming out of the Commission on Clean Heat. They're actually working on more than uh the w- more than twenty recommendations coming off the Commission on Clean Heat, and we are showcasing a few of them that are likely to be finalized through the work that several uh all of our commission commissioners on that commission are working on. So I just wanna pause here and acknowledge all of the commission members that have been spending the last few months dedicating valuable time to working on solutions and brainstorming how we can move forward, how can we move Massachusetts forward? We also have a set of people from our staff, our agency staff, and our uh Housing Economic Development uh Agency to accompany and to support uh the Commission on Clean Heat. So over the coming months, the commission will continue to work on these and on their recommendations and continue to flesh out the recommendation in a more comprehensive way with key action items and action steps by the end of this calendar year. The likely recommendations we want to include here in this slide involve around a few things. One, declining cap on emissions from building heat. With the emissions set for buildings for twenty twenty five and twenty thirty, we will effectively have a declining cap for building heat. We propose to request that Department Environmental Protection to develop the design for meeting those caps via regulation, including a consideration for a clean heat standard for the state. Where projects that transition from an emitting heating resource to a non-emitting heating resource, including weatherization and transition to heat pumps, will receive credits for doing so. We're beginning this work by analyzing the potential for a clean heat standard to help achieve the emissions reduction we need and the potential implications and the costs associated with how to how to um conduct the transition. In addition, we will be exploring and understanding how those costs might need to be spread across different people and across the state and what the implications are for our communities. Second, to create a mechanism for building owners to report clean heat metrics such as energy use intensity and greenhouse gas emissions. We see this as a first step toward having a way to standardize the way to report a greenhouse gas emissions for all different types of buildings across the Commonwealth. We're envisioning this as having a uniform reporting approach for different building types across the entire state. Only having a clear methodology for reporting can we consistently later on set emission standard for building heat. We want to make sure that we achieve equity goals while measuring emissions from buildings and provide a method for reporting and help disclose energy costs and emissions associated with buildings and heating of those buildings, particularly as they change hands either through purchases or leasing and thereby help renters and buyers to make informed decisions. Aligning key programs across the state with clean heat goals. This ranges from small scale, such as adding clean heat guidance to programs like Leading by Example, to sweeping suggestions to change how utilities plan their infrastructure investments and legislation to shift Masse's purpose from energy savings to greenhouse gas emission savings. And more um overarching importantly, really across all sectors, but particularly for the building sector, the emission, the Commission for Clean Heat members have spent significant amount of time thinking through how we remove barriers for transition, including how do we train people, how do we educate the public and provide additional outreach to public about clean heat technologies to consumers, contractors, and ensure that uh folks can make informed decisions as they change out their own heating systems. The interim C E C P discussed a reduction required in the building sector as the most important marginal reduction to achieve to be on pace to twenty fifty. Given the slow turnover rate of building components, while other sectors might have the flexibility to contribute greater and greater or smaller reduction to the twenty thirty goals. Some key changes allow the shift of ambition in building sector emissions by twenty thirty. Um we noted that aggressive federal and le- legislative action to drive reductions from transportation and other sectors give buildings a little bit more breathing room within the twenty thirty economy-wide e- emissions limits. More detailed evaluation and planning has allowed us to specify reduction pathways that phase out fossil heating gradually. This begins with aggressive adoption of both whole home and hybrid heating systems in the twenty twenties while retrofitting existing buildings. Then with the experience gained and hopefully reduced costs from systems, focus on new new home new whole home systems and upgrading hybrid systems to reach whole home performance. This approach is much more realistic, we think, and provides people the flexibility to first adopt the technology now while it's already available, test them out, experience them, and then retiring the old fossil systems uh gradually. This approach will require well-coordinated gas and electric system planning from our utilities to support strategic electrification and targeted gas infrastructure decommissioning to minimize the potential for investing in additional natural gas infrastructure today that will end up adding to the cost and make the transition much more costly in the future. Next slide, please. The power sector. The electric power sector, um as you probably can anticipate, the power sector requires significant amount of head um or sort of lead time for any major projects to to actually be implemented and built. So from setting the policies to understanding what the costs of different resources and to set the procurement, um anything we do in the power sector will require several uh years of lead time for those emissions reduction to actually materialize. For this reason, almost all of the policies in the electric sector are already underway. We have been working on these in the last decade, and there are only a few small changes and updates compared to the interim C E C P. For the most part, these policies were pu- represents forward planning and coordination to develop robust project pipelines and to sh- ensure maximal maximum economic benefits for the region and limits negative externalities such as land use conversions. Policies and investments around workforce development, infrastructure will continue and will have to continue to support the development of new technologies such as offshore winds and make sure that they mature right here in Massachusetts to allow Massachusetts continue to lead in s- some of these technologies. There are a few updates since the twenty twenty timeframe um that the that do affect the electric sector. The the renewable portfolio standard has been raised to forty percent by twenty thirty. Um and there are some uncertainties associated with the new uh with the transmission line from Quebec to Massa- uh to New England. Both of these add some urgency to increase our clean energy standard. So that's one of the things that our um Department of Environmental Protection has begun to uh analyze and and promulgate the rules for increasing our clean energy standard to sixty percent by twenty thirty. Overall, the power sector requires continued attention to encouraging development and deployment. and deployment of clean energy while retaining all of the existing non-emitting resources like nuclear and hydroelectric generation. This means that we will need to continue to pursue and grow our offshore wind industry in Massachusetts. Most of the public funding sought in the earlier slides for the power sector is actually so to support the development of our port and infrastructure for offshore wind industry and workforce needed to deploy them and build up the supply chain in Massachusetts. And just as importantly, we are working with our New England states, other New England states, as well as our independent system operator of New England to move forward the market and system planning reforms needed. All of the wholesale electricity market transformation will support all the clean energy resources that New England and Massachusetts will procure and build to make sure that we stay connected as well as provide reliable service, electric service as we decarbonize the rest of the economy through electrification. Next slide, please. The non-energy and industrial sector, as I mentioned earlier. Next slide, please. The federal government is moving forward with phasing out the production and the use of HFCs in compliance with the American Innovation and Manufacturing Act of 2020. MASDEP is also moving forward with their updated solid waste master plan for 2030 that seeks to reduce solid waste disposal by 30% by 2030. The new item here is proposed legislative change to the Gas System Enhancement Plan, or GSEP, that currently require the natural gas utilities to upgrade all leaky pipes which continually increase the life of the existing gas infrastructure. We need to work with our legislative partners to change this policy so that the strategic electrification can be accompanied by targeted decommissioning of antiquated gas pipelines instead of continually replacing them with new pipes. But we need to do this very carefully to make sure that reliability is, does not suffer in both the electric and the gas systems, and therefore coordinated planning from our electric and gas utilities are absolutely essential to, to, to the transition that we face. Next slide, please. For natural and working lands. For natural working lands, the most important strategy is to permanently protect our lands and trees from conversions. The other strategies, of course, include managing our natural working lands for carbon sequestration and improve resilience. Restore our natural working lands for decreased emissions and enhance carbon sequestration to incentivize durable wood products to extend carbon storage and explore additional carbon sequestration resources beyond our state's borders to help the Commonwealth achieve net zero emissions by 2050. In the interim CECP, we reference the implementation of Resilient Lands Initiative and the Healthy Soil Action Plan to provide incentive programs to achieve the net, no net loss of our forests and farms and implement best soil management practices. But at the time, we did not specify what those incentive programs would be because both of those efforts were still underway as we drafted the interim 2030 CECP. We also didn't specify how we would incentivize the use of durable wood products. In these plans, the 2025 and 2030 plans, under the umbrella of what are also being discussed as Resilient Lands Initiative, we're proposing significant increase in funding for state land acquisition, land conservation grants, farmland protection, particularly for farms that do not qualify for the agricultural preservation program due to federal criteria, as well as increased funding for the healthy oils, healthy soils practices as part of the existing Massachusetts Coordinated Soil Health Program. We're proposing to increase urban tree planting as part of the Greening of the Gateway Cities Program. We're launching a new program that aims to plant trees along bodies of water to increase carbon sequestration while protecting water quality and increase wildlife habitat in and along rivers, streams, lakes, and ponds. We're proposing to launch the Forest Resilience Program as a pilot program for the next five years to encourage climate smart forest management and keep our forests live longer. We propose to launch a forest viability program which aims to support forestry businesses in Massachusetts and scale up the production of and market for durable wood products. Over 85% of the wood products we use here in Massachusetts come from out of state where forests may not be sustainably managed as they are here. By scaling up the durable wood product market here in Massachusetts, we can enhance carbon sequestration in our forests while supporting the communities and the economies in more rural areas of the Commonwealth. To prepare for the Forest Viability Program, we will commission a study of common and uses of Massachusetts timber, the barriers and opportunities for scaling up the durable wood product market in Massachusetts, including workforce needs. To supplement current and new tree planting programs, we're proposing a portion of the municipal vulnerability preparedness grant money be designated for greening projects that provide both cooling respite and urban communities, for urban communities and additional carbon sequestration values. To complement actions proposed in the Resilient Lands Initiative and to limit the amount of forest land and wetland losses to development, we're proposing that forest conversion be a new mandatory threshold in our MIPA Environmental Impact Reviews. Our Massachusetts Department Environmental Protection to update its wetland regulation to require no net loss of stored carbon in the Wetland Replication Standard and to streamline the permitting processes for wetlands in the outer 50 feet of the wetland buffer zone as an incentive for development to be sighted further away from wetlands. Massachusetts Department Environmental Protection to streamline the permitting process as well for wetland restoration projects. To further encourage extended carbon storage from our trees and a reduction in embodied carbon in buildings construction, we propose state-funded construction projects be evaluated on the cost of carbon emissions. This action goes beyond those that are in the recent executive order 594, which requires development of guidance on how state agencies can incorporate embodied carbon and internal cost of carbon in the emissions calculations and programs. For, from all of these existing and new efforts, we hope to permanently protect 28% of our natural working lands from conversion by 2025, plant 5,000 more acres of trees by 2025, and more than 16,000 more acres of trees by 2030. 20% of privately owned forests and farms be managed for carbon sequestration and resilience. No net loss of carbon in wetlands by 2030 and 20% of timber harvest in Massachusetts to be used in durable wood goods. In addition to these policy goals, we're currently discussing setting a net emissions goal for natural and working lands. We just had a technical workshop on March 28th where the technical and subject matter experts gathered as well as members of our Implementation Advisory Committee on Nature-Based Solutions Working Group to discuss the merits, the concerns, the options for setting net emissions goals on natural and working lands. We aim to at least maintain the current carbon sequestration capacity of our lands into 2025 and 2030. This goal will comply with our statutory requirements by the 2021 climate law and is not considered a sector-specific emission supplement. So next, I want to just talk a little bit about next steps and I will open it up to public comments. Next slide, please. As next step, we are finalizing the Clean Energy Climate Plan for 2025 and 2030, including receiving, reviewing, synthesizing the comments of our proposed, your comments on our proposed emissions limits, subliments, goals, and policies to achieve these targets. So please do submit your written comments to this portal and GWSA. If you downloaded this slide deck, you can probably just click on this portal and be able to submit your written comments. Please treat this public hearing with, this is essentially our draft climate, Clean Energy Climate Plan 425, 2025 and 2030, while we still refine and finalize our, the numbers associated with the limits and the subliments and the goals. We will update the proposed limits and subliments because of the updates we're continuing to do in our modeling and simulations and analyses. So the final, I do not anticipate the final numbers to be dramatically different than what you're seeing today, but we are taking your comments and we'll be reviewing and synthesizing your comments in the next few weeks. And finally, the CECP for 2025 and 2030 will be submitted to the legislature on or by July 1st and posted on our website before then, or by then. So this is our, the end of our prepared presentation, and I hope to hear public comments for the next, a little bit less than an hour. And if you have any clarifying questions that hasn't already been answered in the QA, Q and A, you're welcome to raise your hands. Next slide can help me talk through the, yes, to provide oral comments now. If you are on Zoom, you can raise your hands and unmute yourself once we invite you to comment. And if you're joining by phone, you could raise your hand by star nine, and once we call on you, you can press star six to unmute yourself. You could, you're also welcome to submit your questions in the Q and A box. I just wanted to emphasize, I think, what Han said in the beginning. The Q and A and the chats are not considered public comments in a, in the formal sense. So if you either do not get our questions answered or if you have additional comments, please do submit them in written form to GWSA and MAS.gov. So thank you very much for listening to me, and now it's my turn to listening to you, to listen to you. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, and I will go first to Mike DuKlo and invite you to speak. Mike, are you able to unmute yourself?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, I have no comments at this time, thank you.
Okay. I will put your hand down then. And I will go to next in line, Bill. You should now be able to take yourself off mute. Now I'll invite you to speak.
Okay, can you, all right. Thank you very much. This is very impressive that you've been able to put this much together on this, this, these many details of this complicated issue. I have just two, two comments I'd like to make. One is on the, it will be on the, on the emissions reduction side. Having both been an IPCC author, working on, on renewable energy and having built a home that uses it. I am troubled by the fact that the Commonwealth still puts barriers in people's way as to how much solar they can put on their own buildings. One of the things that would speed up with less controversy would be to, would be to make it simpler, to put more solar panels on rooftops. That can be done by individuals rapidly, and it does not require redesigning an entire grid. I bring in electricity from the grid at night and I export surplus during the day, and nobody had to build a new transmission line or a new distribution line or build a, a, a local transformer station or anything like that. So that's just the first thing I'd like to suggest is, is an important change. On the side of natural systems, there, there are a number of very, very good suggestions in here or, or plans in here. But I think without a requirement for lifecycle monitoring of these ideas, we could get ourselves in real trouble. In a study done out in the Pacific, it was found, for example, that in the 115 years of the timber industry out there, tracking the carbon, that two-thirds of it was in the atmosphere is carbon dioxide and just 19% was in long-lived wood products. So we have to be very careful that we make sure when we talk about durable products, we take into account all the emissions that occurred in the harvesting and in the processing that created the wood product itself. And so I think that's, that's really important. And a final point is, we really have to have training for contractors, for subcontractors, and for building inspectors. I could, I will not bore you with the, with the experiences I have had in dealing with, with them. And I would suggest we talk, you talk with the contractors, the architects, the engineers who have actually built some of these buildings and that have met zero net, net energy standards and, 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 and publicize these in some way so people can see that it's possible and learn from the experience of those who've actually done it. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and I'll go to Pamela Kelly. You can now unmute yourself.
So I have one concern, which is on energy storage. I have, I, I may have missed it, but I didn't hear any mention of, of the plans for energy storage nor the estimates for how much energy storage we will need. So that's my first question, and I'm wondering if you can give me an answer of your estimates for energy storage, which without that, we can't make good use of offshore wind.
Okay, I can quickly address that. You're right, I did not emphasize energy storage. We do currently have a Clean Peak Standard Program in Massachusetts to encourage clean reduction of peak usage of electricity, which includes incentives for storage. We will need storage, all sorts of storage, and particularly as we move up to additional additional amounts of renewables, we more likely, most likely will need long duration storage. So I do think you're right, we will need storage. We do not have an estimate of how much we need in the state. I guess I don't think of it that way. I think of it as, you know, we provide incentives and encouragements for storage to be built, to facilitate into, into integration of renewable energy, but we don't quantify exactly how much storage. I think we're still at the phase where storage is valuable and they do enter into the market today across New England because of the value they see in the marketplace.
So just to continue quickly, where I live, which is near the Connecticut River, we drain the Connecticut River every night for pumped energy storage into Northfield Mountain High Level Reservoir. But it makes the, the river run backwards every night. And it, it also, it also shreds every living thing that goes into the pumps in real violation of environmental law, by the way. And it, it could be addressed by building another lake at the bottom of Northfield Mountain Storage, which is worth 1,000 megawatts of peaker plant storage. So I think with, with the infrastructure money that's coming from the feds, So I think, uh, with, with the infrastructure money that's coming from the feds, it would be possible to build that and avoid the fifty-year relicensing of the Northfield Mountain Pump Storage that they are searching for right now. And it's a Canadian company. It's not even an American company looking for that relicensing. So, uh, the, I guess that's all that I would want to say, and thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and now I'll move to Paul. I now invite you to unmute yourself.
Have I succeeded? Have I succeeded in unmuting myself?
Yes.
Great, thanks. Um, so I saw the reference to developing a carbon sequestration offset program. And I'm not philosophically opposed. I think in theory, there could be such a thing as a worthwhile carbon offset. But I wonder how would this program as you envision it so far deal with the challenge of, you know, true additionality? Like in particular, you know, if, uh, let's say there's a forest and somebody puts it under a conservation restrictions, so trees won't be cut down. Um, there's a question whether that merits full carbon credit because there are trees really going to be cut down and what timeframe? I'm sure there must be similar questions for other kinds of carbon offset. So I don't know how, can you say something about how far along are you in your thinking and developing a carbon sequestration program and how do you account for true additionality? You know, in the timeframe that matters, you know, a tree that will grow big a couple decades from now doesn't really help us now when we need it. Any comment?
Yes, good question. Um, we will definitely need a good accounting system and that's the first step of this process. And, uh, we are doing some work now, I have been doing this work in the last year to get a, a good accounting system. And then we need to develop really a, a system or before even talk about markets, a system of, what is eligible for credit, what is not. And then we need to think about what a market structure might look like. And I don't, uh, market meaning, you know, who receives a credit and what credit is counted for and those kind of things. We're only, I would say, in the first step of this journey. Um, and I think future clean energy climate plans, including possibly the one, uh, for the twenty fifty-one that needs to be updated, will address more of these different steps. But you're, you're, you're absolutely right that we need to think about these things and start planning for them. But we are not quite there yet for this clean energy climate plans.
Thank you.
And, um, I will go to Ted Noonan. You can now unmute yourself.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and Mike, my comments, uh, you know, majority of my comments are going to be surrounding the, the increased use of biofuels. Um, you know, of, of all the, the comments, and I think it was a great presentation today, certainly a very supportive of the state's, you know, kind of pathway moving forward. But, you know, our industry has an immediate proven drop-in solution, you know, for reducing carbon emissions today. Um, you know, m- myself, many of my colleagues have blending biodiesel into, into heating oil. Um, you know, in the ten to twenty percent range, I have, uh, colleagues in the eastern part of the state blending into the forty to fifty percent range. You know, the State Department of Energy Resources has acknowledged this with the incentive provided in the APS program. Yet we continue to kind of fight an uphill battle, uh, with being included, um, as part of this. So our industry can help Massachusetts bridge to a net zero emissions building sector with this fuel. Um, you know, un- unfortunately, and we've installed them for a long time. Unlike, unlike expensive and poor performing electric heat pumps, you know, consumers can contribute to reducing emissions of biofuel today without incurring expensive heating system modifications. Um, you know, electric key pumps conversions usually are double the price of, um, you know, a, a boiler or furnace replacement, and they're going to last half the amount of time of traditional systems. That's just fact. Mitsubishi is very clear on how long they'll last, and they're about ten to twelve years. The average oil heating system lasts twenty to thirty. Some last up to fifty. We prefer they not last that long. Obviously, we prefer to get them changed out before then. So seeking a renewable energy electric grid is a laudable goal, but it's years away from reality and serious questions linger about the grid reliability and higher electric rates for consumers, which we're seeing today in a major way. Um, I saw today, uh, I don't have to restate the details. I saw today, less than nine percent of the power generated today was renewable outside of hydro. Um, we've already talked about the idea that, you know, getting hydro from Canada is a great thing, but until we can make that a reality, to me, it's the cart before the horse. So, and finally, just to mention, um, you know, the, the concern of um, how involved the, the nat- the natural gas and electricity operators are in pushing their agenda with regards to these plans. We really think it's an unfair advantage that they continue to have an, and, and enormous impact on how this all gets translated um, and not always with factual information. And we found that most recently with the mentioning how concerned are we with the cutbacks to the Mass Save Rebate Program and how this will negatively impact and unfairly impact heating oil customers that pay into this program. And last but not least, we are i- it very much, and we've looked at it on our own self. Um, the concerns regarding long-term impacts of recycling batteries and solar panels that are beyond their useful life. I, I firmly believe that solar is a viable option, although it does not meet the scale that we need, that's necessary. Um, and, and that's why I think that we need to not be, uh, uh, short-sighted in the view of a, a kind of a one solve, one size fits all approach. We need to have an all-in energy policy to make this work for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will move to Brian Campbell. You can now unmute yourself.
Brian Campbell. I just wanted to continue what I said this afternoon. Um, the last speaker was, was, um, good as far as, um, renewables meeting our needs um, here in Massachusetts. And, um, we really had to, we really, what, what ISO is saying right now is that we need more thirty-seven hundred megawatts of, of, um, firm generation. This is what the CEO of ISO said. But it is also warned that this winter more than thirty-seven hundred megawatts of gas-fired generation resources are at risk of being unable to get fuel when needed. While the region's power plants and transmission are always, are weatherized, right? We are concerned about the fragile energy supply chain to the region during extreme weather. And we had a, um, January cold snap where we were burning, um, about sixteen to twenty-six percent of our, uh, of, of the grid, of the ISO New England grid was, was fuel oil. And, um, as you know, fuel oil is highly polluting. It emits, uh, two point five micron, um, um, particles and, um, which cause lung cancer. And, um, we were running off of, um, stored fuel oil for our gas plants. And that natural gas has doubled in price now since, um, twenty twenty-one. And it's only going to go up. So that's how come I'm saying that we should really look again at nuclear power. And nuclear power, right? In the, um, in the, in the C E C P for twenty-five and, and you guys have it listed, uh, under the Clean Energy Standard. And, um, it says that we can, um, raise, tune the Commonwealth's various attributable markets to each other in activity and pricing. And I'm hoping that we can increase the, um, see, um, the Clean Energy Standard, um, for our present Seabrook and Melstone nuclear reactors so that they stay profitable and they improve. And hopefully we start really building new nuclear power here in New England again. Pilgrim, if we had, uh, uh, an effective Clean Energy Standard, which should never have been shut down. And it's, it's really beginning to hurt us in this worldwide energy crunch right now. So again, please consider nuclear and it also says in that we're going to have to have approximately sixty thousand acres of land in Massachusetts over the next thirty years for industrial solar. And I am hoping that Massachusetts does not institute the same program that they have in New York right now where, um, local zoning boards, right, cannot zone out solar. And, and, um, right now, when you drive along ninety, Route ninety out to, out to, uh, the New York border, I mean, you look on the sides of the road and you look up and you see, oh, there's a solar farm, there's a solar farm, there's a solar farm. You see where, where they've cut down the trees to put the solar in. It's just, i- i- it anyways, um, I'm hoping that local, um, zoning boards will, will, um, prevent that from happening. And again, we need nuclear power. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, I will move to Natasha and invite you to speak. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not sure.
Hi, this is Kathy Christoffersen. You unmuted me, not Natasha.
Okay, Kathy, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, um, good evening. My name is Kathy Christoffersen, calling in from Ashby in North Central Mass. I'm a ratepayer of Unitil Electric. Um, I want to comment tonight specifically about that building sector slide showing that the interim twenty thirty C E C P goal of electrification of one million homes is now replaced with so-called hybrid heat, using a heat pump for maybe only half of the heating demands, no longer all of the heating demand. The, um, described backup fossil fuel systems benefit no one but the fossil fuel industry, certainly not the planet we are supposed to be working to save. Uh, the IPCC recently said it's now or never. Reducing the electrification goals in the building sector, I hope that the Baker administration hasn't chosen never because that or some maybe later is not acceptable. I would urge E E A to return the building sector goals to one hundred percent electrification, abandoning the false solution of burning other so-called decarbonized gases of biomethane, hydrogen and S and G blended into the distribution system, as has been suggested by the gas industry in the D P U twenty eighty proceeding. Methane is methane, whatever the source combusting it is a climate disaster. Reaching zero emissions requires a future without gas. Please remove the unnecessary backup fossil fuel systems from your new expanded definition of electric space heating and keep it one hundred percent electric. Honestly, it's really quite amazing to see a definition of electric space heating, including fossil fuel anything. If we are to meet our zero emission goals, we must get off fossil fuels sooner rather than later, not keep them in the gas distribution system entrenched forever. Also, um, as a conservation commissioner, I would like to comment that streamlined permitting of development in the outer fifty-foot of the wetland buffer is essentially an abandonment of the one hundred-foot buffer zone of the Wetlands Protection Act, which for me is very sad to see. It's hard enough to protect the wetlands as it is. Um, so I would hope that you would not streamline further development in the one hundred-foot buffer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. And now I'm gonna, um, invite Natasha to speak. You're gonna unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you. I'm with, uh, Sierra Club also near Ashby. I'm in Lancaster. Just had a couple of comments, um, as far as the traffic and the, you know, emissions in Boston. Manito put in rules that cabs had to be hybrids, but you never saw that with Uber or Lyft. And I'm afraid that people are really getting, get used to driving again because of COVID and they're not going to take the train. So that would be one thing. It's like, why don't we require that people idling in Boston for these transportation, uh, you know, there's used hybrid cars. I bought two used hybrids recently for fifteen thousand dollars. You can do that, uh, plug-in hybrids. And, uh, my employer is part of the federal government is mandating three days a week. I mean, I know Mayor Wu wants people to come in, but lots of us commute over an hour and we really don't have to come in that often. I think with the IPCC report, we need a forty-five percent reduction in the next ten years. So to ask people to come in three days a week for really no real reason, uh, I think we really need to look at, look at that. And I do agree with the, uh, restriction on the solar. I am promoting solar in my town. I started my own solar kind of group and the people are wondering, they haven't even installed heat pumps. They don't have electric car yet and they're being told they can't go above the twelve kilowatts. So I agree with the previous person of like, why are these restrictions happening? Thank you.
Thank you, Natasha. And, um, I will invite Dale to speak.
Okay, I hope I'm on. Uh, I'm Dale Lavandier from AIR. Um, so I'll just read my question that I edited to fit in the, in the text box. Um, when fusion power generation becomes available, uh, environmentalists in Massachusetts will agree that the current decarbonization roadmap will be obsolete. This could occur in the mid, actually maybe the early twenty thirties, according to Commonwealth Fusion Systems Company in Devon, uh, Mass. As a result, the following will become stranded assets. All infrastructure relating to offshore or onshore wind power and utility scalable photovoltaic systems, utility-scale energy storage, offshore wind tran- uh, wind power transmission systems, onshore port and industry facilities that support offshore systems. Um, and as well as, uh, the trained workforce that, uh, was put up to deal, you know, to deal with all this. The prudent interim means to deal with Massachusetts' immediate need to decarbonize would be nuclear power. The siting of nuclear power plants at locations of former fossil fuel, fossil fuel-fired plants has the advantage of using existing grid connections without modification of not requiring natural gas-fired backup. Uh, and these same plant locations could later be used for fusion generation systems. Um, you know, there are more advantages, but I'll let the, the undersecretary comment. Thank you. Are we done?
Undersecretary, did you want to, um, respond to that more?
Uh, I believe your question has been answered in the chat. Um, is is your question why we aren't focusing on nuclear?
Uh, it's why we're going to strand all of the offshore wind and photovoltaics and storage systems when in only a relatively short period, we'll have, uh, viable fusion, uh, power generation. The way to go in between now and then, since we need to do something right now, is nuclear power. It's, you know.
Are you suggesting new nuclear power?
Uh, well, obviously continuing current systems, but also, yes, new plants, including small modular reactors. If, if that's, uh, if that's, uh, advantageous. But the, uh, three generation, you know, generation three plus plants are, uh, an excellent prospect for generating reliable. And again, reliable in terms of environmental, uh, uh, well, things like hurricanes and so on. Uh, and, uh, steady, uh, power period.
Yeah, I mean.
Without storage.
I happen to know, I happen to know a little bit about permitting new nuclear power plants.
That's the problem is the.
So if we think that, um, if we think we have a difficult time placing a substation in East Boston or transmission line through Maine or as previous speaker, uh, talk about relicensing of an existing hydro facility. If we think those are different. talk about relicensing of an existing hydro facility, if we think those are difficult. I happen to know a little bit about some of the new proposed nuclear power plant in the South. And I would say it takes at least 10 to 15 years to permit. And probably 200 to 300% of cost overrun.
And the overruns were due to delays. You know already that the Korean, the South Korean industry has just put up on, on time and on budget in.
The only point, the only, yeah, the only point I wanted to make. The only point I wanted to make is that by the time we add up the time and time for the permitting and construction, if they can even be constructed, I don't think there any, they're not, I don't think of them as near term solutions anymore. I think, I think the, the thing we should do is protect our, protect and help sustain our existing clean energy resources, including existing nuclear. Thank you.
Yes, right.
Okay, those were all of the hands that we had raised.
Great. Well, thank you very much for listening and participating. I know this is a lot to digest. Hopefully the, having the slides help a little bit. And feel free to submit additional comments through writing. And I hope you stay safe and enjoy the rest of your evening and those that are in Massachusetts, enjoy the school holiday next week. And thank you again for participating.